I would like to call the, to order the Columbia Heights School Board meeting of June 9th. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. All right. Thank you. Before we get going, I just want to read a quick statement. It says due to the current federal and state emergency declaration, the Minnesota Directive of residents to stay home and limit person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic. This meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021. Meetings by telephone or other electronic means. School board members are reminded to mute their microphones or phone when they're speaking. The school board members wishing to speak should raise their hand and then wait to be recognized by the chair, or in Laura's case, unmute and hopefully I notice. The chair will determine the order in which board members wish to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute the microphone, speak, and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded and access to this recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible. All right. Thank you. Molly, could you do the roll call, please? Severson. Here. Mueller. Here. Palmer.
Here.
As Samurai. Larkin.
Here.
Superintendent Kathy Kelly.
Here.
Louis, here. Sorry. It's all right. We're all getting used to it. It's a little different when you're not sitting at a board table and you're just, your eyes aren't tracking around it, right? Let's see. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We will now move on to the agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. So first, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
John, a second.
Second.
Lorian, I think. Right? Yeah? Was that Lorian?
Yes, that's correct. Lorian, on the second.
Thanks. All right. Motion carries. Our announcements for this week, June 16th, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, there's a school board work session held by Zoom, as far as I know, but it says in the community room, June 23rd. Tuesday at 7 o'clock, there'll be a regular school board meeting in the community room. July 3rd, Friday at the district center is closed for the observance of the July 4th holiday. Superintendent Kathy Kelly, do we have any correspondence tonight?
Madam Chair and members, there's no correspondence this night, tonight.
All right. Thank you. Communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The school board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting or requests presented at this time. Do we have anyone down there who would like to make comments?
Madam Chair, there are no citizens or employee representatives to speak at communications to the board.
All right. Thank you. We'll keep moving then. We're going to move on to the consent agenda that includes a personnel report in the minutes of the May 12th and 26th regular school board meetings and the May 19th school board work session and the treasurer's report from April 2020. Do we have a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
All right. Any discussion? I did not actually get an approval on the agenda. I did not do the roll call vote. So I'm going to
I was just going to say that.
back up the clock there and we're going to go backwards in time. So we're going to go back to the approving of the agenda as we did not officially approve it. Is there any discussion? There were motions to move it forward. Is there any discussion on the agenda? All right. Molly, could you do a roll call vote on that one, please?
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
As Samurai.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Louis, aye.
All right. Motion carries. We'll go back up to the consent agenda, which once again is the personnel report in the minutes from the May 12th and 26th school board meetings and the May 19th school board meeting as well as the treasurer reports from 2020. Do we have a motion to move that one forward? Hala, and a second?
Second.
Molly, any discussion on this one? All right, Molly, would you do a roll call vote on this, please?
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
As Samurai.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Louis, aye.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for putting up with me on that one. We will move on to reports from members of the board. Wow, let's start with Hala.
All right, so I attended the goodbye thing, surprise for Kathy. Her retirement thing and the closed session right before this meeting. And I've had conversations with some parents and community members and I feel like I'm missing something, but it'll come.
All right. We'll see. John?
Same as Hala with the recognition and then the closed session. I was having the opportunity to be a part of recognizing my daughter as a senior walking across the stage. And I mentioned it previously, but they're doing a great job, especially with everything that they have to work with. So I appreciate everything everybody's been doing for that. And that's all I have to report.
All right. Thank you. Lorian?
Yep, I attended the chair meeting prior to this as well as the closed session. Had a conversation last week with Superintendent Kelly. And then I've also reviewed the Metro XU budget that was sent out to the member representative. So I have reviewed that as well.
All right. Thank you. Laura?
Okay, yeah, it's been a very eventful couple of weeks here. And I guess I would actually like to read a statement that was presented by Connie Hayes, the superintendent over at 916 at our last school board meeting. I was practically in tears and I'm hoping I can get through this. But I would like to read this to the board and share this with the board. Okay. It starts with, "Let me start with the tragic death of Mr. George Floyd. Like all of you, as educational leaders, our leaders and staff here at 916 are grieving the loss of yet another life from the black community at the hands of those who are supposed to always protect them as citizens. The tragedy of his death and the response here in our community and around the world is the result of 400 years of racism in this country. It should not be a surprise to anyone that the trauma our neighbors and the black community face every day resulted in the kind of expressions of anger we have seen. As American citizens, we ask ourselves after we see another tragic death, what can I do? What can I do? We are citizens first and our power is our vote and our influence is to be part of our democratic process at all levels to bring, to help bring about change. We have to continue to believe in we, the people. What can we do as educators? A place to start is to review the guiding principle which the Minnesota Department of Education has laid out for us in our equity work within our districts. Let me read the statement to you. Educational equity is the condition of justice, fairness, and inclusion in our systems of education so that all students have access to the opportunities to learn and develop to their fullest potential. As leaders, we need to turn that around into a question. Will this decision create the conditions of justice, fairness, and inclusion in our system of education here so that all students under our care have access to the opportunities to learn and to develop to their fullest potential? The questions and the answers we seek to are as important to a school district, whether it is at the very beginning or already on the journey to better educational equity. As educators, many of us are naturally problem solvers and we want to jump into action right now. And that is not a bad thing. But as we have learned over the last week, we need to just listen before we jump into action. None of us, board members, superintendent, community, can know what the experience has been for our friends, our neighbors, and our family members of color, and especially those right now in the black community. If you are feeling the need for action on the part of yourself and other white leaders in our schools, here is a list of reflections each of us can do today, right now. The list of 10 was developed by Jean Jordan, Director of Educational Services, and Jasmine Smith, Principal Manager at Carner Blue. One, listen, listen, listen. Do not instantly provide resources, answers, or advice. Two, provide help or suggestions if they are sought. Three, only offer resources that you know you can provide. And four, do not minimize or try to equate your experiences like, I know how you feel. Because, nope, you don't. Five, do not provide the counter narrative to what they are saying, like speaking about the police or National Guard members that were injured. Six, do not take anger at white society personally. Resist becoming defenseless, defensive. Be relentless. Do not talk, seven, do not talk about your fear or safety as it relates to protesters. Eight, at no time ask for other colleagues to educate you around historical trauma. Google it. Nine, believe what you are hearing. If your neighborhood is quiet, that doesn't mean it's that way for everyone. And 10, believe that systematic and institutional racism are real. And I will finish with, black lives matter. They matter to me. They matter to our schools and our districts. They matter to our communities. They matter to our country. Black lives matter. Period. I hope all of us can find the wisdom and strength and courage to use our influence as citizens and educational leaders to finally make change and save lives. Thank you. I have
Sorry, I'm muted. Laura, I was just going to ask, did you have anything else in your board report? And perhaps you could include that in the board packet on Friday?
Yes, I would like to do that.
Okay.
There was also, over at 916, we also had an update on the long, the distance learning as results, the results from this special education. And there were some absolutely amazing things that happened. Some students actually thrived in this environment because they were able to have less distractions. So we're kind of looking at maybe more of a blended service and being able to offer more long-term support. So I thought that there was some really good things that we've learned out of this over there. I was very concerned about these groups of students who had such unique needs. I also attended Kathy's surprise party and that was awesome. And I'm really going to miss her. And a special call meeting just prior to this. Thank you.
All right. Molly?
Thank you, Natty. Yeah, it's been a busy couple of weeks. I attended with children, of course, in tow, many of the end of the year drop-offs and things like that. And just kudos to the district yet one more time. It was well organized, really well done. I also had an impromptu meeting with Superintendent Kelly. Thank you for that. And I think the highlight was definitely graduation for my son as well earlier today in the rain. But just a huge shout out and thank you to all of the admin and everyone in the district that supported that. It's been really neat to hear from the other parents as well and the students, how much that means to them. And then I also attended the closed session prior to this meeting. Thank you.
All right. As for me, I did also attend the closed session prior to this meeting. I have had conversations with different community members. We had a chair meeting with Lorian, myself, and Superintendent Kelly prior to this meeting. I also attended the small gathering for Superintendent Kelly to celebrate her retirement. Just like with all the career, people who are, whose careers are coming to a close. I wish we could have had a large celebration, but we realized that's not possible, given all that's happening. And we wish all of them well. And I had at least one or two phone calls with Superintendent Kelly over the course of the last week. Superintendent Kelly, could we get your report, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, I attended the Metro XU Executive Board meeting. The focus of the meeting was on budget, much as a member Mueller talked about in her report. The impact of the pandemic has caused position reductions of staff over at XU and they're looking for the fall to do most of their professional development with remote access. And the budget projections should hold unless there's additional unforeseen pandemic impacts that occur with the second wave of the virus. The board is also asking admin to provide a guiding change document in the event that the executive director were to retire in the next few years. This was my last meeting on the Metro XU Executive Board of Directors. Zina Stenwig was voted as an interim, one-year interim replacement to fulfill the rest of the term over at Metro XU. Congratulations to Zina. I also chaired the Tri-Metro Conference Governing Board this week. The budget was reviewed there, too. The finances in this, on this board are very sturdy. And it's kind of a sad sturdy because we didn't do that many spring sports. And so the monies, the revenues are still there for the sports that didn't happen. And so there is a large reserve. There was also a major topic was schools that may or may not be in the conference one year from now. Some of the smaller schools expressed concern that if larger schools were inkling that they might join the Tri-Metro, the scholars, the smaller ones might pursue leaving. Because what's kind of nice is that there's a nice mix of small and medium schools now. But if bigger ones were, they would felt like the competition wouldn't be equal. Enrollment was discussed with all of the schools. And that was pretty alarming from the standpoint of some of the private and the academy schools are projecting a 20% drop in enrollment of students for next fall, especially schools with international students because they can't get into the country. At the end of June, Columbia Heights Public Schools will pass the leadership baton to De La Salle for the upcoming 2021 school year. I'd like to say thanks to Principal Robleski and our Activities Director Antoine Harris for leading the principal and the athletic director groups all year. And a special thanks to Don Hoyum for supporting the work of the Tri-Metro Executive Board throughout the year. I also attended the chair meetings, the closed sessions, and had multiple contacts with members of the board throughout the last couple of weeks. Enjoyed the surprise gathering. You were all very sweet and nice to me to get together. And I want to thank each and every one of you for your time. That concludes my report.
Sorry, once again, still muted. Thank you, Superintendent Kelly. We're going to move on now to the Association of School Boards Official International Certificate of Excellence in the Financial Reporting Award. So I'd like to welcome up Denise Sunstrom, our Director of Finance and Operations.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm pleased to bring you the Association of School Business Officials International Award. We got a certificate of excellence in financial reporting. And this is a significant achievement for our district. And it's our 13th year of getting our award. And here's the plaque that I'll give myself. At least I don't have to have a picture now this time.
We could arrange for it.
Oh, yeah. So I just want to say thank you to everyone that participated in the audit, our whole finance team, everyone in the district for following the rules. And that's why we're allowed to get this award again.
All right. Congratulations to the whole financial team and Denise for your leadership. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Lorian.
I think I would be remiss if I didn't comment, especially since Denise puts up with me at every board meeting with financial questions. So congratulations. You know, I've learned a lot from you and your team about our finances. And it just really appreciate the careful attention that you put into every detail. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Lorian.
Yeah, thank you, Denise. I echo everything that Lorian said. And I'm glad that she is able to speak for all of us. But I know that you handle a lot of tough questions and we appreciate all of that. Hopefully, we do get a picture of you with that plaque somewhere.
Thanks. And the team.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much, Denise. We'll move on to item D, department updates from the Finance and Operations. So you, I guess you can stay right there.
Yeah, I'm back up. Do I have, can I share my screen or are you going to do it, Brian? Okay. Okay, good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here tonight to provide you with the Finance and Operations Department update. And actually, if you go to the next slide, Brian. It's our mission, all belong, all succeed. We're concentrating on the core values of excellence, integrity, and innovation. And I have three people here tonight with me and they're on the Zoom. So we have Paula Steele from the Finance Department. She's going to give the finance update. And then she'll hand it off to Maggie. Then Maggie will do the food service update. Maggie Maggio is here. And then Transportation, Arlen Viding is here. So I'm going to hand it over to Paula right now. Oh, go back one more. Thank you. Okay.
Hello. Good evening, Chair Severson and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update for finance. I'd like to start out by sharing who is in our finance area since we did have a change in payroll this year. Our department now consists of Denise, Director of Finance and Operations, myself, Controller, Nicole, the Mars Manager, Kelsey, District Accountant, Sarah, Payroll Accountant. She's new and just started in February, so she didn't get an opportunity to have her picture put up here. So you guys will have to stay tuned next year to see that one. And then Heidi, who is half-time finance and half-time human resource admin. Next slide, please. As you can see, our finance department consists of four areas. Mars, which in summary handles student information, attendance, and grading. Special education finance, which includes CEDRA, tuition, and medical assistance billing. Finance, which includes cutting checks, depositing funds, budgeting, and audit work. Payroll, which involves getting everyone paid and making everyone happy. For our department, the first nine months of the year started out as usual. And then, as you all know, COVID-19 happened. For us, this meant working remotely from home and figuring out how to efficiently continue to do our jobs virtually paperless. This was accomplished through emails, Zoom meetings, and coming into the office periodically. Next slide, please. In the Mars area, Nicole has been working on the fall and end of year's Mars reporting cycles and submitting MDE required reporting. She's also been doing maintenance to synergy, school setup and rollover, and reporting cards calendars. And while doing all these things, she's also providing support to our staff and our teachers and then gearing up for the transition from Mars to a new MDE ed-fi reporting system over the next year. In special ed, Susie's been busy with updating CEDRA to prepare for the rollover to next fiscal year and reporting staff and salaries and benefits for our local collaborative time study funds. And then also finalizing billing for tuition and medical assistance. Next slide, please. For finance, Kelsey's been working with Heidi to keep the day-to-day operations of getting invoices approved, paying vendors in a timely manner, and depositing funds. They have been working both in the office and remotely to accomplish this. The fiscal year end is quickly approaching us, so we have been preparing for it along with the upcoming audit, which we received a call from the auditors asking us if we think we can handle it virtually. So we'll be doing some more scanning and a lot of emailing. We've also been working on financial reporting for grants such as Perkins, 21st Century Community Learning Centers, and Title Programs. And with the year ending, we are also in the process of creating the new fiscal year in the system, which includes updating the system profile to reflect next year's purchase order numbers and journal entry numbers. It also involves creating a new chart of accounts since MDE throughout the year will go through the components of the account code and either make changes to them, delete them, or add them. So we have to update our charted count to reflect the new codes. And then we're also busy working on entering budgets into the system for the next year. So when July 1 rolls around, staff has access to that. And then to add some fun, eFinance Plus, our software, is receiving an upgrade this year. And we are looking to try and do that upgrade in July. So that will involve some testing and running a parallel payroll where we will run our normal payroll, but we'll also run it in the test environment to make sure that there's no glitches in the system. And finally, for payroll, Sarah is continuing to process bi-weekly payroll, gearing up to process the summer payouts, filing the quarterly federal and state reports, and working on the closeout of the fiscal year and again, starting for the new fiscal year. And with that, I will turn it over to Maggie for the food service update.
Next slide. All right. Thank you, Paula. So as you know, we switched to a self-operation on July 1 of last year. So I think I was here about a year ago, or not at my house, but with you guys, introducing myself and talking about what we're doing. So this allowed us, you know, more control over what we do. But it also involved a lot of work finding new vendors, new menu backup house software, creating some new menus and forms. So it was really starting from scratch. And so that's how I spent the summer last year. And thank you. So this resulted in some great participation from students across the board for last school year or the school that just ended. So this is breakfast participation. So participation is the percentage of students who ate the meal on average. So as you can see in the orange graphs, we had participation increases at most schools, including some large participation. And as you hopefully know, we started offering free breakfast to students at the start of the 2019 school year. And we did see increases with that, which was great. And then I can say the biggest increase we saw with breakfast participation was when we started doing a second chance breakfast at the high school, which is gives students the opportunity between first and the second block to have breakfast if they missed it prior to school. And we started that at the end of January, so operated it a little under two months and saw about a 30% participation increase during that time. And then we were planning to rolling, roll it out at CA in the end of March. But as we know, we were not in school at the end of March. So we're hoping to do that when we return to more normal operations in the building. And then the next slide is just the lunch participation. So as you can see, also increases in lunch, definitely bigger increases at the elementary school. I think, like many, we're still trying to figure out middle schoolers and exactly what they like to eat. But you know, it's an ongoing process and I think we learned a lot this year and things were even increasing more as kind of we got to February or March. So it was sad we didn't get to finish out the school year in that respect. But we'll, you know, take what we learned and the kids will all change their mind for next school year. You know, it will keep on. So next slide, please. So this resulted in some increased income. So in the prior school year, you can see the income was about 1.8 million. And the projected, if we had gone this full school year, would have been about a 2% increase in income. And that, you know, the participation increases were higher, but the income doesn't necessarily reflect the same percentage because of a drop in enrollment at some of the schools. So that's great news and hopefully we'll continue it when we're back to normal. So next slide. And so some of the exciting news that also happened was we were able to receive a number of grants. So over $50,000 in grants for the school year. So this farm-to-school one from the Minnesota Department of Agriculture allowed me to hire a consultant to plan Minnesota Thursday menus. So if we are back to school in September, the first Thursday of every month will be a totally local menu. So we're excited to do that. The recycling grant was for North Park Elementary to get real silverware. You can see the picture on the top left, those real forks and spoons that kids get to use, which has been wonderful. I think kids have really liked it. My staff has really liked it and good for the environment. The second Harvest Heartland Breakfast After the Bell, that's what I mentioned. The high school started that other opportunity for students to eat breakfast and that and that paid for the breakfast cart that you see kids grabbing food from in the hallway there. This milk grant, we actually just received, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over the MDE one. So that's for the tilting and braising skillet, which is that metal piece of equipment there. That'll go in the high school this summer and gives us some more flexibility on cooking different things. It's a giant skillet, for lack of a better description. So it'll allow us to do some more scratch cooking, incorporate different flavors. Hopefully, some things kids will enjoy. And then the milk grant is another North Park initiative. So that is the bottom-left picture. So instead of getting the little cartons of milk, which we know students enjoy, they'll have a milk dispensing machine and so there will reduce the waste significantly. So those milk cartons are recyclable, but it'll mean, you know, less waste going into the recycling. So that'll be exciting and I think a good opportunity for kids to learn about milk. And the consensus kind of is that milk tastes better from a bulk milk machine. So we'll see how that goes. And then from ship for the county, we were able to buy a number of kind of super food processors that allow us to process fruits and vegetables for kids more quickly. So it's been wonderful to get that money to kind of do some, you know, extra things that really benefit students. Next slide. So things were going along well, as I just described. And then like everyone, we had COVID-19. So on March 18th, we moved to delivering meals to students out in the community. So from March 18th to May 28th, which is when the school year serving ended, we served 73,744 meals of breakfasts and lunches. And we started out serving about 250 students a day and in May, we averaged 639 students a day. So the support was great from the community. It was great to get to know people in a different way. You know, I can, if I see a car drive up, I can tell you how many meals they get and what family is in it just from being out there. So it's been, it's been really great. And then by increasing participation and adding weekend meals, we were able to keep the financial losses for the departments at a minimum, which, you know, put us in a good position going forward. And then we started summer meals about a week and a half ago on May 29th. And that also has started out a little slow, but we've gone up about 150 a day just in the last week and a half. So we hope the community will keep supporting that and we will be able to keep serving and providing meals for kids because we know this is a hard time for everyone. So we're happy to be able out there and doing it. Next slide. Thank you. So the questions, you know, we have, just like everyone, what will next school year look like? How will we serve food? What food will be available? That's one of the things we've dealt with this year, much like in a grocery store, there's been shortages on shelves. We've had a lot of issues getting the food that we need to be able to serve. How many students will be serving? What type of staffing do we need? And then what rules and regulations will we be following from the state and federal governments? So it, you know, it's been an interesting time leading up to this and I think it will continue to be interesting, maybe even more so than what we've already experienced. But, you know, my team is on a wonderful job tackling what they've had in front of them and we've had great partners along the way. So I am going to toss it to one of those great partners, Arlen and Transportation, who did a wonderful job helping us figure out buses and what routes we should go to and stops to provide the most opportunities for kids to get meals.
Thanks so much, Maggie. Appreciate the working with you this spring in a way that we in transportation usually aren't familiar with, but you're gracious in working with us and it was, it was a good, good opportunity for us to continue to partner with the district and members of the community. I would like to take a little bit of time to update you on transportation from last year. Some of the highlights, some of the challenges, and talk again about the future that we have ahead of us this summer and going into next school year. Wanted to start by just highlighting some, some of the characteristics of our system that really out, that really speak to the commitment the district makes on a daily basis to, to go out into our communities and pick up our students and transport them safely to school, ready to learn. Of our student population, we transport approximately 2,500 students daily. We transport that population to our five district school locations, to our one in district private school, Immaculate Conception, and throughout the school year at any given time, anywhere from 10 to 15 out-of-district locations for student services. Eight of those locations are part of the 916 Northeast Metro Integration, or I'm sorry, Northeast Metro 916 system. Various other locations throughout the metro depending on the students' needs that are, that are needed at those sites. Our main core transportation system involves 17 regular ed, large school buses, about 16 smaller yellow type, what we call type A school buses for special needs transportation. And then a, a small army of what we refer in the school bus industry to type III school buses, which are the non-yellow vans that you see throughout our community and at our schools to transport low incident student transportation, both in district and throughout the metro area. The, I, I have to take the opportunity every time I have an opportunity to, to speak with, with the district school boards and the community. We, we only can do this and do this huge lift every day in transportation because of our professional drivers and the pairs that are on our vehicles that show up every day and do an excellent job to, to focus on what, what we focus on each day. And that's safe transportation, consistent transportation, and at a, in a most comfortable and secure manner possible to our students and to our families. Getting to the bullet points here, last year about this time, we were very much involved with bringing on a new main transportation provider with Monarch Bus Service. We've, we've made it through the year. There were, there's always challenges to a change in service provider in student transportation. We worked through those challenges and I'm, I'm happy that we've gone through the year. Monarch Bus Service continues to be very committed to the district, both from the driver and pair ranks and the support teams and their leadership. So we look forward to continuing to build that partnership as we go forward. Some of the other, again, the other low incident transportation services are provided to the district through a, through an agreement with Collaborative Student Transportation of Minnesota. They're an organization that works with probably 30-plus service providers throughout the metro and their, their focus is to try to provide efficient and collaborative transportation services where we're, where we're going out and purchasing the services that we need to, to transport those students in the wider, wider service area in, in the most efficient, efficient way possible. Thinking of other highlights for the year, it's, it's hard to think back over the last three months and not having students on our buses. But one of the key, key rollouts this year was the Safe Stop Bus Tracking Application for parents to, to see, see on their smartphones at the bus stop, see, see where the buses are along their routes and as they approach their scheduled stops. Any, any rollout of a system, again, is a process of working through, through the implementation process. I think as we were into January and February, we were largely into operational mode there. And we look, look forward to that being an asset to our, our community going forward in the school year ahead. Next slide. Normally, again, our process and work this time of year is kind of transition work, uprolling students from, for the grades, changing grades to next year, starting our routing processes. All of those things are in process. In addition to that, we have a lot of thoughts about what might be the new normal or new needs in transportation that the district will need going into next school year. From the contractor standpoint, certainly, again, driver recruitment, driver training, driver certifications, all of those are normal summertime processes gearing up for the school year. A lot of those processes because of, for example, licensing stations being closed. There's a lot of makeup and catch-up that we're, we're working with our contractors to make sure that we're ready. Some of the questions here that we have at this point, again, I think we're kind of in a listening and a information gathering mode. We're asking ourselves, what are the needs that the district might have that aren't different than, than they have been in the past? How will these, these impact our students or families, other stakeholders, the staff that we work with at the school sites? And again, certainly our bus contractor partners. Next slide, please. Thank you. So again, our listening and our planning is really trying to apply what we're, we all hear day-to-day in, in this COVID environment of how do we translate social distancing into the school bus? How does that work? How do, how do we work to achieve social distancing at the bus stop? Looking at our loading and unloading processes as students get on and off the bus. I think we all can understand the tight environment that a school bus is and how do, how do these new realities translate into those situations? The bullet points there continue to go on to areas that we're, we're talking about in the transportation, in our transportation circles. How do we provide employee protection to our drivers? What are the PPE equipment that we need to think about? How do we handle student temperature checks and certification or the verification that students are, are healthy and ready to ride the bus and ready to arrive at school for learning? Bus cleaning and just disinfecting processes are certainly all types of new considerations there that we're exploring and working to adjust past practices to fit for what we believe as new realities going forward. All of this is kind of happening within, what is a review in the industry of what are the best practices and how are they going to be redefined going forward? We're, we're watching the same guidance that I think the larger school district administration is listening to, Center for Cease Control, Department of State, Department of Health, Department of Education. Certainly, there are professional organizations throughout the nation, here in state, school bus operators, school bus manufacturers. All these organizations are busy at work trying to define the questions, trying to research the possible answers and solutions. And to, to kind of paraphrase and, and put a little bit of an end on this, we're trying to explore everything that we can and have everything available from a transportation perspective that when the district makes decisions on how we, how we move into next year that we're ready to, to translate and provide our, our service based upon the district's needs. And with that, I think back to Denise.
Okay.
Or, or back for questions.
Yep, that's it.
All right.
Yep.
Well, thank you, everybody. Board members, do you have any questions? Or comments, of course? Or Molly?
Yeah, I don't mean to sound like a broken record with my thank yous, but my goodness, we just know the last three months has been a whirlwind. And as a board member, but also as a social worker, putting that cap on, just hats off to food services and transportation. One of the biggest worries we have in child welfare is, you know, the food that was being provided to our kids and the way that you guys did this in our district to roll it out as quickly and efficiently as you did and making it so accessible in the neighborhoods where the kids could get there is just really greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you.
Other hands there? And congratulations. I, I just was thinking about how there was a, you know, a desire. I, I think I had a personal desire to see more kids accessing the food service thing. So it was encouraging to see that the participation had increased. Mike, as anecdotal, that my kids enjoyed the food a lot more this year. I don't know if other people have heard anecdotal research, but I just appreciate the attempts and, and the, was it like spices or sauces that, that, that the kids enjoyed? So, so thank you for that opportunity for more healthy lunches in kids' tummies is always a good thing.
Yeah, it's great. I'm glad to hear they enjoyed it.
Yeah. Other comments from, or questions? All right. Well, thank you for joining us tonight. We're glad you could be here with us. We're going to move on to the blue, oh, sorry, the, yep, the Blue Ribbon, North Park Blue Ribbon Task Force.
Okay. Good evening Chair Seversen, members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly, Principal Sasek, and I are here this evening to provide information about the North Park Blue Ribbon Task Force. Of course, our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And with this big project, it truly does encompass all of our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. So this evening, we'll be providing information and then back on June 23rd, the school, or the school board will be asked for, to approve the plan. So starting out with the process, early in the school year, Superintendent Kelly outlined the task force charges, which I believe are included in your board packet with the full plan. And then a task force executive committee was formed. With that, an outside agency, Baker Tilly, conducted a scientific community survey that was shared with, the results were shared with the school board. And then in addition, the district conducted some in-house or non-scientific surveys of North Park staff, North Park families, and then Columbia Heights Public School staff as well. With, after that, the formation of a larger committee, which included an application process and was really diverse representation from across the school districts. So as you can see, we had North Park staff, parents, community members, district staff, and then representation from other schools as well. And we had about 30 people on this large committee. And so with that, we had a series of meetings throughout the school year. We even had a couple of meetings prior to distance learning and then were transferred over to Zoom. So I've just got two quick data points to summarize the surveys. So one question was, should we redefine and rebrand North Park as a specialty school? Or should we keep it as is right now? And so you can see overwhelmingly, people responded that, yeah, let's, let's, let's test out a specialty school. And then the, throughout all of the surveys, the, there were several options. As you can see, Spanish Immersion, Environmental Science, Montessori, and STEM. And you can see the, the breakdown here as how people responded to the survey with the different, the different subgroups preferring different specialty areas. So the task force was formed and met. And what the task force really did, or the work of the task force, was to review the charges outlined by the superintendent. Also, look at the current strengths of North Park. So the full task force received presentations on the Green Ribbon Award, the Learning Studios, and the emphasis on environmental science that has taken place at North Park in recent years, the Four Seas, and some of the, some background that they've done in previous years with STEM. Stan Maraz gave a rousing presentation and those of you who know him can, can imagine. The full committee reviewed all of the survey data and then took a look at the different models and really explored what each of the models are, reviewed data locally around the metro area. How many schools are in the area? How, how are they doing? What's, what is their attendance or their population like? What are their successes? And then discussed the pros and cons of each of the And then discussed the pros and cons of each of the models as they might apply to North Park. Now, prior to distance learning, the plan was to have small subgroups go out and visit different schools. That wasn't a possibility as we moved into distance learning, and so we were able to reach out to different folks, including the folks at the Department of Education, to give us some information that way.
Chair Seerston, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, good evening. We did come up with a recommendation from the, several recommendations from the Blue Ribbon Task Force. Of course, you probably guessed that we are going to be redefining ourselves as a STEM school, and we also have the beginnings of an implementation plan. And the overall recommendation includes, for the implementation includes a significant professional development, curriculum alignment and review, communication and marketing, I might add, evaluation and resources. Next slide. So if we're looking at the three-year implementation plan, year one will be next year, the 2021 school year, and it's really about planning, preparing, and maybe doing a little bit of piloting. We're going to continue to have PLCs, we're going to continue to work on our standards as always, but we're also going to begin in November, working with consultants on professional development, on integrating STEM into everything that we do. We're also, we've already begun to take a look at different STEM curricula that are out there, so we'll be making some decisions in the near future on that with the hopes of being able to pilot some of the STEM curriculum next year so that we can get a good idea of where the work is going to need to be done for the following school year, which is when we'll have a larger implementation, and we'll be monitoring that implementation overall. And then, next slide, please. When we're looking at year three, we're looking at getting closer to or reaching our vision. So what that'll mean for students is pre-K through fifth grade students will be actively engaged in some modules throughout the year in all domains of science. I'm sure that will probably be pretty environmental science-heavy to fit so many of the other things that we're doing, but we're also going to be looking at, you know, overall building themes throughout the building. And of course, like we have with environmental science over the last several years. For, what that means for families and community is we need to make sure that our communication is on point so that they all understand and are able to support STEM learning at North Park. And we hope also to be partnering with local businesses and industry to provide some real-world experiences for students. And staff, there'll be an awful lot of collaboration, and really the collaboration's going to begin next year, but we hope they'll be reaching a vision of point by year three to provide rigorous opportunities for all of our students. And that doesn't mean just, you know, just in science, technology, integration, engineering, and math. I mean, that's throughout every discipline and with a special focus on social emotional needs of our individual students like we've been doing for many years. So we're not looking at really dropping anything, we're looking at accentuating science, technology, integration, engineering, and math through everything that we do. So coming up at the next school board meeting on June 23rd, the board will be asked to approve the North Park plan. I do believe that you have a more detailed report, our white paper, in your board packet for you to be able to review so that if you have any specific questions, then you certainly will be provided answers. Do you have any questions for us tonight?
Would you mind pulling down the slideshow so I could see people's faces?
Sorry.
No, it's all right. It's just, I can't see everyone's hand if they raise, so any questions? All right. Well, it looks like we've got a quiet group tonight. Well, thank you so much. I'm excited, you know, as a former North Park parent. Oh, Lorian, I saw that hand now.
Sorry, that was a last-minute question. I just raised it. I mean, it missed me. Can I, and maybe you said this and I missed it, but can we, when will we be talking to the greater community about the plans for North Park?
So communication, there's a section for communications on the, on the plan that is in the board packet. We want to make sure that we are communicating early and often, so even though it won't efficiently, you know, per board approval, if it's approved by the school board at the next meeting, then we would want to communicate out to families so that we're able to recruit and retain and really flesh out what that, what that's going to look like. The school's going to need a little bit of time in terms of really deeply understanding STEM to have, you know, kind of that deeper and more specific communication, but some of the first communication around it's becoming a STEM school and here's what that means. There's been a lot of questions around the arts as well, and I just want you all to know that the arts folks, the teachers from North Park were included on the committee, and parents and community members brought that up as well. So those are the kinds of things that we want to make sure we're able to communicate out to the, out to the community at large. But I anticipate communication and Jeff will probably want to weigh in because he wants to market as soon as possible.
Yeah, I would, I would hope that marketing efforts will begin August, September. You know, I think that it, we want to give an awful lot of lead time to members of the community so that they have the opportunity to better understand what direction we're going in and what we're going to look like so they can make decisions for their students.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, everybody. You too.
We'll move on to the Community Education Adventure Club, Mini Adventure Club fee,
Kristin, we can't hear you.
I think you're muted still, Kristin.
Sorry about that. Can you see the screen now?
No.
Now, can you see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I'm here this evening with Director Sunstrom for the Adventure Club and Mini Adventure Fee Increase. You'll remember that every year, we come to the school board seeking a fee increase because the cost of programming increases annually because, largely because of the cost of staffing. So this evening, of course, our presentation is rooted in our district's mission, which is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner all belong, all succeed. This evening's presentation will emphasize the core values of community, collaboration, and integrity. A reminder that Adventure Club and Mini Adventures must be self-sustaining, and so the fee increase is solely regard, is solely related to the increasing cost of program. And so I'll start off with the Mini Adventures Child Care Program. This year, we're having to make adjustments due to COVID to change our ratios of students to teachers, so that's an added cost, and especially so when we're talking about our youngest children, those in Mini Adventures are three and, are three and four-year-olds. So you'll see that this is an increase that's higher than the 5% that it was last year, and this is really due to those added costs of needing to change the ratios between students, children, and the staff. So our fees are based on the number of days per week that families register, and you'll see a comparison of this year's fees to what we're proposing for next year. I should have indicated at the start that this is a governance question, that we will be coming at your next school board meeting as an action item, and that these materials were included in your board packet for review. And then we move to Adventure Club. Adventure Club is not as much of a fee increase, in part because we are able to have more of a ratio of one to nine, whereas with our younger children, we're wanting to keep it down a little bit lower to one to eight or so, and it's a longer day. And then, so you'll see the comparison of this year's price to next year's price. You'll see that the summer full day is more of a jump, and that is because we have really been under charging for those full-day programs. And so we are still, our fees for both Adventure Club and Mini Adventures are lower than our neighboring districts, so we are very much within the market cost and a bit lower than that, but we are needing to increase the fees. The fees do include meals and snacks, field trips, though we're not planning on any field trips in the, in the near future. All of the curriculum and programming is supervised by licensed, by coordinators or managers who are licensed teachers. Our Mini Adventures program is four-star parent-aware rated. We have a lot of different activities, and we do have fee assistance for eligible families through our Pathways scholarships, but also through the county childcare assistance programs. So this request of support for a fee increase for Mini Adventures and Adventure Club will be brought to your next school board meeting on June 23rd as an action item.
Thank you for all your hard work in the childcare realm. I know this has not been an easy time for you, and like Molly said, I, we feel a little bit like a broken record, but I'm under the impression that we should always show gratitude. So, thank you for all your hard work. Any other comments before we move on?
I would just like to say that it's the, it's the work of the people that are actually with the children for which I have deep gratitude. Thank you.
Yes, as always, as somebody who's not a teacher, that is my always, always answer. All right, well, thank you so much, Kristin. We're going to move on then to the Worker Compensation Insurance Renewal, Director Sunstrom.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Chair Seerston, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I have in the packet, it's the workers' comp renewal for fiscal year 2021. The school district is going to, is recommending that we stay with United Heartland, that's our current vendor, and our mod rate went down from 1.08 to 1.01, which was really good. And the way the claims are looking for next year, I think it's going to even decrease in our next renewal. So the cost for the workers' comp is going to be $203,833, and that would be a 4.5% increase from the current fiscal year, which is good because the, it's based on salaries also, as well as the mod rate, and salaries were up 3%. So this is just for your information tonight, and I will be coming back on June 23rd to ask you to approve United Heartland as our vendor for workers' comp next time.
Lorian, I'm just going to give you one more second on this one. All right.
Thank you, none for me, thank you.
All right. Okay, go ahead, Laura.
Yeah, actually, I know that you, that you had stated about the mod rate. Could you explain exactly what that entails? It's based upon incidences and claims over a certain period of time?
Yep, it's, it's three, it's the last three years that they take, and they do an average to get the mod rate.
That's very good. Over at 916, we look at that mod rate very, very carefully because it can be a huge swing from year to year. Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Excellent. All right, thank you. We're going to move on to Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan. We'll invite Brian to join you. Director Anikins.
Good evening, Chair Seerston, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Brian and I are here tonight to ask you to approve our 10-year Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan, and it is up on the screen. It's a spreadsheet that we complete. It comes up from the MDE. We do a 10-year spreadsheet based on the different categories of the Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan. So we get revenue based on our adjusted pupil units, and we, Brian and I are projecting that we will have 3720 adjusted pupil units, and we get $380 per pupil unit. So that is just above 1.4 million a year. So when we were working on the spreadsheet, Brian, if you want to go down a little bit, the first year 2020, we had, we're spending 2.7 million, but that was to use the fund balance that we had in reserve when we were going out for our building projects. But then years 2021 and out for the next 10 years, we are staying within our 1.4 million, that's our plan. There are a couple years, if you look at 20, the first year is, is that 2021? 2020, that we have 151,708 additional because we had asbestos projects that we had to do for North Park in the remodel. And then two years from that, we are looking at doing the firewall in the high school to, right where the new band room is, because that's a fire marshal requirement, right?
So, just to jump in quick on that, so when we added the band room on to the high school, we were required to bring the high school up to fire code and discovered that the high school, though it had a sprinkler system, did not have appropriate fire separation based on square footage throughout the building. And they, we worked with the city and the state on that, and the state is requiring that by July 1st, 2022, that we have that project completed. So we are looking at that being one of our larger projects for next summer to aim to implement those firewalls as necessary. So that's why you see that in that category too, and it increases our total below because it's additional revenue that we access because it qualifies within that fire, that 360 year, that fire safety area.
Thanks, Brian. So we have to have this 10-year plan approved in order for us to start spending long-term, long-term facility maintenance money. So we'll be back next time on the June 23rd meeting to ask for your approval of this 10-year Neddy, you're muted?
Yeah, I know. I'm, I toggled between that and the agenda now, and I, my computer's not letting me find Zoom again. So if you have a question, please feel free to, there it is, feel free to ask it. I don't see any hands. All right, thank you. We'll see you back at the next meeting.
Okay.
All right, let's move on to the Northeast Metro 916 Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan Resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Seerston, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Just like our district, District 916 also has to submit a Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan to the MDE, so they do, they have a 10-year plan that they do, they then have us, all of their member, as a member district, approve their plan, and then they will split up their amount between their districts. So they're asking us to approve 173,600 this year, it's going down to 142, so they're staying, it doesn't really hit up to 300 until about five years out. So that is split between, how many districts are in 916, 10? 11 districts. So...
15.
Oh, thanks, Laura.
Thanks, Laura.
Thanks, Laura, there's 15 districts that this amount will be split between, so all of the member districts are passing this resolution. This is just an information item tonight, and we'll bring it back on June 23rd to ask for your approval.
Questions on this?
And when we bring it back, it'll have a resolution with it on June 23rd, it's kind of a long resolution.
Yeah, thank you. I like to read those out loud, and I know everyone really likes it when I read those out loud, too.
Yeah, so it's in the packet right now, but...
No, it's necessary and good. No, it's necessary and good that we follow these board rules. I'm learning that more and more. All right, if there's no questions, we'll move on to the next item. All right, let's hear about ESSA grants. Hi, Tara. I didn't greet you. Welcome, Tara.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Sierson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here tonight to share our preliminary allocations for our federal grants, which include Title I, Title II, III, and IV. Our mission in Columbia Heights of all belong, all succeed in creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, and really focusing in on our core values of excellence, collaboration, and integrity. I'm here today as an informational item, but will also be back June 23rd as an action item to receive approval from the school board for our preliminary funding. So I'm going to go through each of the different titles. We actually just received the amounts last night. So they are updated with our preliminary amounts. They're still preliminary because they do change throughout the year depending on the funding from the state, if they have more funding to allocate to school districts. So Title I, the main purpose of Title I is to ensure that all children have a fair and equal opportunity to obtain a high-quality education. It's really focused in on academics, supporting each and every student with academics. We determine our key activities for each of our title funding using a team of stakeholders, which includes administration from school, from the district, parents, teachers, students. We also talk to our world's best workforce to discuss the different activities that we include. Our Title I key activities are really focused in on supporting the academics through staffing. So we include an elementary sciences in there, intervention. We also focus in on Title I has family engagement, a mandatory part for family engagement, as well as support for students who are homeless or in foster care. And then many of our titles you'll see on there, there's a non-public mandatory support. So we are required to offer it to the non-publics in our school district, and we have, every year have had Immaculate Conception agree to it. So we work with them on what they would like to use our funding on, and there usually has been materials and a Title I teacher to support the academics. Here's our projection for Title I funding. The preliminary allocation as of last night is listed there, as well as our anticipated carryover. Our carryover is a little different this year because MDE, the Department of Education, has applied and received a waiver to allow districts to carry over more than 15% of our FY '20 funding. And this is because many of the activities that we had planned in Title could not happen due to COVID-19. Our preliminary allocation, just to give you a little reference, is lower than last year. We anticipated this as a district. The allocations are really based upon the free and reduced lunch. So it's focused in on academics, but the allocation amount that you get is based on free and reduced, and we knew that number had gone down a little. Title II is focused in on academic achievement, but really looking at improving teacher and principal quality, which includes professional development as well as coaching. Here we also have staffing in there to provide coaching. It also includes attending professional development sessions, bringing in consultants to support our teachers. And then once again, our non-public mandatory support is included. Our preliminary allocation and our carryover from this year, this is pretty similar to what we received this year. In terms of reference, the amounts are pretty similar to FY '20. Title III aims to ensure that our multilingual learners have an opportunity to receive support to attain English language proficiency. And there again, we spend most of our budget on support with teacher support and staff development. So coordination of the program, some of our liaisons are in there as well, providing supplemental language support, and then family involvement activities. And our preliminary allocation for Title III is similar to last year for, for Title III, that's pretty similar to what we received last year as well. Not many changes there. And Title IV's aim is also to improve academic achievement, but it does it in a little different way. It supports well-rounded education as well as safe and healthy students to technology. So for well-rounded education, we really focus in on literacy through the arts, accelerated learning, and supporting our STEM subjects, so science, technology, engineering, and math. And then safe and healthy students, the focus has been on physical education and health education as well as social-emotional learning. For technology, which has been really important in the last year, as we look at COVID-19 as this year, and then also looking forward, has been focused in on professional learning tools as well as professional development. Our projection for next school year is listed there, and this is similar to what it was from last year as well. And Title IV is a little different. They have a lot of parameters in terms of how much needs to be spent in each category. So you'll see listed there that at least 20% has to be in the top two categories for well-rounded and safe and healthy. Technology has to be less than 15%, and then the non-public is in there as well, and they give you the amount for that one. So I went through it really fast, but I'll be coming back again in June 23rd, and this was also included in your materials. There aren't a lot of changes in terms of previous years, but open to any questions or comments?
Do we have any questions? I know there have been years where we didn't receive some of these grants, like in the different titles. Is that, how often does that fluctuate, and what can we expect in terms of that?
Well, Title IV is one that we have been up and down. I know Superintendent Kelly told me back when she was up and teaching and learning it was there, and then it went away and it came back again. So that is one that we don't depend on every year. We really have to see what the federal government gives. But Title I, II, and III have been pretty steady. The amounts, as mentioned, have changed depending on our free and reduced and our population in Columbia Heights.
Other questions? All right. Thank you. We will move on to the LEA Authorization.
You're stuck with me again. I'm back.
I'm never stuck with you. We like you.
Good evening, Chair Sierson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I do not have a PowerPoint for this one as it really relates to the last presentation around ESSA and our title grants. Each year, we are required to seek approval from the school board to authorize an LEA, which is our local education agency representative, for our title grants. And I'll read quickly what the representative does. The LEA representative ensures the school district maintains compliance with the appropriate federal statutes, regulations, and procedures, and acts as a responsible authority in all matters relating to the review and administration of the Title I, II, III, and IV plans. So I'm here tonight as an informational item, but will be back again June 23rd, asking for approval to make the recommendation to change from Executive Director Zenas Denvik to myself as LEA representative for the 2020-2021 school year.
Great. Other questions about that one? All right. Thank you so much, Tara.
You're not done with me yet?
Oh, we're not done. So we're going to stick with our Director of Teaching and Learning and Dr. John Frye and Director Stunkel also. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Sierson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here with our Director of Community Education and Communications, Director Stunkel, as well as Dr. Frye, or our Director of Special Education. And we came to, we came earlier in February and shared our program update for our summer programming for 2020, and with COVID-19 had to make some adjustments. So we're here tonight as an informational item to share with you some of those changes that will be made. Our mission in Columbia Heights of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, and focusing in on the core values of community, excellence, and collaboration. This is an informational presentation, and there'll be no governance question to follow. So I'll start by just sharing a little of the guidance that we have received from the Department of Education. And the Department of Education is allowing districts to decide between a hybrid or a virtual model for summer encore, for summer school. And if, depending on which model you choose, you need to make sure that you're adhering and accounting for the Department of Health guidelines of six to nine students per classroom, as well as Department of Health guidelines need to be adhered to with the food service and transportation. So with the current format that they're offering, they did also mention to us that it could change. We know that the pandemic is happening and things are happening every day, and they could determine or make changes throughout the summer depending on what is going on. So we use their guidelines for our summer programming, as well as our own considerations, to determine what changes needed to be made for our summer encore programming. And some of those considerations we took as a school district were to look at the funding for summer encore. And summer encore is funded through our 21st Century Grant, as well as targeted services. And targeted services determine that funding will be provided for direct instruction at a 15-to-1 ratio. So we really took that into account, determining if we could really afford, in terms of our budgets, the hybrid model, or if we should go with the virtual model. And then we really thought about our past summer encore programming, where we combined academics and enrichment, and wanted to make sure we were continuing with that. So our decision was to move our summer encore program to virtual after checking in with staff, as well as families, to determine that this would be the best option for our students and staff. So our program will be running from July 6th through July 31st, and it will be from 8:30 to 10:30 via Zoom. So it will be synchronous learning. Students will be receiving technology and materials, and teachers will be online, teaching them directly, which is a little different from what we've been doing during the school year. I know the high school did this, but our 1 through 8 did not. So this will be a change for the summer. Classes will be Monday through Thursday with our classroom teachers. And then on Friday, sessions will be hosted by specialists as well as outside organizations. So students will have the opportunity to do art, physical education, and science, as well as Spring Brook, Northern Clay, and some other outside organizations that will be supporting students. Teachers will also be working in teams and creating a thematic encore experience. We're excited about this. We have our science teacher doing planting. So every student will be receiving a bag of materials going home that they'll be picking up at the end of June so that they can plant at home and do, have conversations and work on writing and math with their teacher using that planting. So really giving them the tools that they need at home for the classes. We also will be running our summer seminar, which is our cross-collaboration with St. Anthony. And this will also be in the same format via Zoom from July 6th to the 31st, and it will be run Monday through Thursday. We have an amazing teacher from Columbia Academy who will be joining our St. Anthony teachers to create a project-based learning experience. So they've already started working together and planning, and the students have already started registering. So we're excited to see what this could look like this summer for them. And then for the high school students, we will continue with our credit recovery, which is run through Northeast Metro 916. So we've been working with them. And their dates are a little different. It will be from June 15th to July 28th. They will also be doing it virtually in a distance learning format, and they will be providing the technology for our students in that program. And I pass it over to Dr. Frye to share a little about special education changes for summer encore.
Good evening, Chair Sierson, members of the board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. Special education, we're going to be providing a distance learning model. And part of that is for those students who qualify for ESY grades K to 12. We will follow that summer encore hours, 8:30 to 10:30, structure as well as time. However, there will be additional hours for some of our students depending on their ESY IEP services. And I listed some of those there, speech OT, blind visually impaired, orientation, mobility through 916, of course. But then also perhaps some reading and math as well, depending on what the student's IEP says is what will be in addition to the 8:30 to 10:30 time. Additionally, our ECSE birth to five teachers will, and students, they're going to be having their sessions, excuse me, sessions spread out for June, July, and August. And for August, we will be looking at kindergarten readiness for some of those four-year-olds heading to kindergarten. And finally, we have an opportunity recently that some of the evaluations that we've had to delay the last few months, MDE has given us some guidance to allow us to do some of those face-to-face assessments, like an IQ test, an academic achievement test in speech and language, where we'll be working with, working on with the hope of completing those during the summer of 2020. Otherwise, we're going to have, right now, I think we've got about 50 or 60 delayed evaluations that we'd have to do in the fall. And I don't think that would be tenable for our teachers in the fall. So we've got a plan in place. We've got MDE guidance, and we're scheduling some of those right now. And then the other thing I want to just talk about for the summer, some mental health support. Again, for those students who are identified and needing support, specific to check-ins during the summer, the student support staff, our school social workers, and school psychologists, they'll be checking with those students throughout the summer. They've identified some, they've connected with those families and those students prior to the end of the school year to make sure that we have some continuity and consistency over the summer, which I think is a great plan. Additionally, Lee Carlson Center will be offering parent support groups as well as student support groups over summer for our students and families. And those support groups will have both a broad but also kind of a narrow focus. I know they've got a broad offering. Right now, we are working with them to determine what is best for the heights and how we can narrow some of that focus for our students in light of recent events. And then I'm going to pass it over to Director Stunkel, Community Education.
Good evening. So I'm going to start off with our youngest scholars in early childhood. We're providing a lot of distance learning offerings through the summer. So we'll be working with families at ECFE and Pre-K 3. We will not have onsite programming this summer. We've got a Google site that has been shared with families and videos for parents and guardians regarding specific parenting topics in a series on emotional coaching that's taught through our parent educator. We've got activities and weekly choice boards for students focusing on multiple domains of learning, and that's facilitated by our early childhood teacher along with activity videos for students, including mindful movement kind of activity. And then ECFE staff are serving families to identify other areas of support. Other community education programs, we are offering our 21st Century Programs in partnership with the Columbia Heights Recreation Department and Library, and we hope to, they are already providing those programs, and then we're hoping as a school district to provide some additional opportunities in August. We are offering our strength training, not inside but rather outside, and that will be starting up at the end of this month. There are some possible sports programs that, we just got new guidance as of Friday. So with that new guidance, we're looking at the possibility of offering now football, dance, soccer, and swimming. All of that is still in the investigation stage to make sure that it can be aligned to MDE, MDH guidance. We're continuing with our adult basic ed programs. As you heard in a previous school board presentation, we're offering distance learning, adult enrichment classes, and one outside class. And then, though it's just a one-time thing. And then we did have to cancel some of our summer sports camps and environmental camp due to the restrictions with the pandemic.
All right, questions?
I had one.
Molly, I saw it. Molly, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Just really quickly, just to touch base on the summer camps. Is it correct then that those have been completely canceled and there's no revisiting them, and that we're just looking at sports continuing up again in the fall? Or is there anything in the works for summer other than strength and conditioning?
So in that previous slide where I mentioned about the football, aquatics, and those other ones, those, because the, some of the guidance just changed on Friday with MDE and MDH, now in communication with the Activities Department, earlier today, we discussed the possibility of adding back some of those sports that we originally thought we would not be able to due to the restrictions. But we have not been able to yet finalize that we will be able to offer that, but we are investigating those again.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I should have picked that up.
No, that's okay. But I just wanted to say, especially aquatics is such an interesting one. And so what we're, what's most important is the safety of the children. And because the guidance is always changing, we're really wanting to stay right on top of what the current practice is. And then I'm in communication with other community ed directors across the state to discuss, how can we do this safely? And so, yeah, it's a lot of, a lot of good minds working on this, and I appreciate our Activities Department as a partner in that.
Thank you, Kristin.
Other questions? All right. Thank you so much to all the directors who just shared. I think that brings us to our action items. Director Bennett, would you like to present to us on the employee handbook?
Chair Sierson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Tonight, I'm here to present the.
Tonight I'm here to present the employee handbook for 2020-2021. It's an annual process. We review it. So last year we had Karen Keppel review it, our attorney. She says that everything looks good on it. There's very minimal changes. It included updating contacts as staff have changed, updated some policies that had changed. Changing the superintendent letter to reflect the new superintendent July 1. So very minimal changes this year. Again, it was reviewed by the district attorney. So tonight I'm here seeking approval of the 2021 employee handbook.
All right, any questions? All right. Hearing none. Can I have a motion to carry this forward? Lorian, you got a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, John. Now we can do discussion. Just asking one more time, any discussion? All right. Molly, would you please do a roll call vote?
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, Lindsay. All right, now we will go to the Comprehensive Arts Program Plan. Director Stenvik.
I think you missed one thing with me.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I? Oh, yes, I did. Sorry, thank you. The settlement agreement.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Presented earlier to the board was a settlement agreement. The district has come to with a former employee. The district, we worked with Margaret Skelton from Rabbit, Rosack, and Maloney on the agreement. So tonight I'm here seeking approval as the settlement agreement as presented.
All right, so in accordance with Minnesota Statute 113D.05 subdivision 3B, we met earlier in a closed meeting for attorney-client privilege. And so again, Lindsay's asking for the motion to approve the settlement agreement as presented. Could we get a motion to move that forward?
I moved.
Molly, second?
Second.
Lorian, all right, discussion. All right, Molly, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Lindsay. I think really this time I can move on to Director Stenvik. So, thank you. Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. At a previous board meeting, the school board was presented with information on the Comprehensive Arts Program Plan. This included four strategic directions, multi-year goals, and also metrics. The plan was developed over the course of the school year with guidance from the Purpitch Center and included in community members and also all of the arts teachers in the district. So this evening I'm here seeking approval for the Columbia Heights Public Schools Comprehensive Arts Program Plan. All right, can we get a motion to move that forward?
I'll move.
John? Is that second from Laura?
A second, yeah.
Okay, I couldn't tell who it was, sorry. Thank you, Laura. Discussion. I guess I have one question that is not really pertinent to this vote, but as per schools are so fond of, are we just going to be calling this CAP from now on? Or?
Yes. Several years ago, the Columbia Heights was lucky enough to participate in CAP. And on that, the Heightened Arts Committee was formed. Ha, well, they just call themselves HA. And so, yeah, really taking that established committee and moving forward with it. So building upon that foundation that was created previously, yes.
All right, great. Any other questions? All right. We, we did a motion, right? Yep, we did a motion. I'm losing my mind here. Yes, thank you. Good, Molly, could you do a roll call vote, please? Thanks.
No problem. Severson.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right, motion carries. And that brings us to, thank you, Zena, for that. That moves us to board topics. Do you want to have board topics? All right. Hearing none, we will adjourn the meeting at 8:37 PM.